Welcome to the North Middlesex Regional School District School Committee Meeting. It is March. It's November 18th, 2025. Meeting time is 6:00 PM. We have in attendance tonight. Keenan Francois.
Here.
Alexander Bancooty.
Here.
Mike La Boyce here. La Boyce Bossier. Oops, you're on mute.
La Bossier.
La Bossier, alright. Randy Rush.
Yes, here.
Lisa Bloom.
Yeah.
Jackie White.
Here.
And for Administration, we have Superintendent Brad Morgan.
Here.
Jeremy Hammond.
Here.
Nancy Haynes.
Here.
Gary Reese.
Here.
Student Representative, we have Natalie. Stupak. And then Chantel Almstead is a principal at Hawthorne Brook.
And Kim Craven joined.
Oh, and Kim Craven?
Here.
Alright, I think that is the roll call. This meeting is being recorded. And do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I will move that we approve the consent agenda consisting of minutes from October 21st, 2025 for the school committee warrants, accounts payable warrants, 261023, 261030, 261106, 261113. Pera warrants approved for October 23rd, 2025, November 6th, 2025. And the donations from Apple iPad to Nissitis at Middle School for Literacy Assessment for $485.74, $1,340.63 to the high school from O'Connor Studios, $391.40 to Squanah Cook Early Childhood Center from O'Connor Studios, $153.88 to Squanah Cook Early Childhood Center from O'Connor Studios, $250 to Squanah Cook Early Childhood from Joan Watkowitz. I apologize for the pronouncing of that. $29.11 to the high school from Ohio Pile Prince, $846 to Spalding Memorial from Box Tops for Education, and $2,981.8 to Barnum Brook from O'Connor Studios.
Hi, Saka.
So that was Randy, and then Lisa Bloom, a second. Alright, it is a roll call vote. Lisa Bloom.
Yes.
Keenan Francois.
Yes.
Alexander Bancooty.
Yes.
Jackie White.
Looks like Lisa may have frozen. Let's give it a minute for her to rejoin.
I think Mike might be frozen also. There we go.
Can you hear me again?
Yes.
Alright.
So just for everybody, not just me.
Um, Kim Craven, I think I was on you.
Yes.
And Jackie White?
Yes.
Alright. Has Carla joined? Carla has not joined.
No, it's not.
Um, Michael La Boyce here. La Boyce.
La Bossier.
La Bossier. Alright, I'll get it.
Uh, yes.
And myself, yes. So the consent agenda is approved.
You didn't hit me, Lisa.
Oh, Randy. Okay, Randy, alright. Our internet disruption happened, so Randy. So that was unanimous. Alright. Moving on to Public Communications. Robin.
So I don't see Mr. Rob Templeton in the in the room, so as an attendee, so I'm gonna move on to to one comment, and just let you know Carla has joined.
Okay.
Just give me one second.
Hello, I'm on.
Hi, Carla. We've just moved on to the Public Communications part, and Robin's going to read a statement from a community member.
So we received a public comment statement from Mary McMurray of Ashby. She emailed, "I noticed that once again you were going into executive session to discuss contract negotiations pertaining to the superintendent. I would like to offer my thoughts. We taxpayers have been told over and over what a dire situation the district is in. You have closed the only Ashby school and bused our children to towns, and you raised club and sports participation fees a huge amount, and increased parking along with every other little thing you could think of. I must add that the lack of transparency of our administration and school committee is disturbing. We have asked many times what the actual cost versus savings of closing Asheville Elementary was, and we were never given an answer. I'm guessing it was because there weren't any savings. For these reasons, I'd like to say that the superintendent should not be getting another salary increase. If he feels he can't use all of his vacation days, then he should plan ahead like everyone else does and use them or lose them. If the district has to cut back, then that should include everyone. I also find the fact that you go into executive session in the middle of your meeting instead of before or after is questionable. It's as though you hope everyone will give up waiting and leave the meeting so you can make more questionable decisions." And that's all we have for public comment.
Thank you, Robin, and moving on. I am on to the chairman's report. I received a letter from Mary Dodry from the, she's the Ashby Town Administration, and I'm gonna enter that into public record as well. She, this one is dated, an email dated November 14th. "The Select Board respectfully request that this letter be read at your next school committee meeting regarding Ashby Elementary School. We appreciate your attention to this matter." Thank you, Mary Dodry. And here's the attachment dated November 7th, 2025, from the town of Ashby. "North Middlesex Regional School District School Committee. Dear Chair Martin and the members of the committee, the Ashby Select Board is writing to you regarding the status of Ashby Elementary School. As you know, your committee voted this past March to place a pause on operations at the school due to financial constraints within the North Middlesex Regional School District budget. In light of the significant surplus funds currently awaiting certification, we respectfully request that the committee lift the pause and plan for Ashby Elementary School to reopen for the 2026-2027 academic year. It is important to note that this committee, many of whose members continue to serve, worked diligently to establish a new, worked diligently to establish a new regional agreement among the three member towns. A key provision of this agreement is that each town shall maintain a school within its borders. We trust that the committee remains committed to upholding the spirit and intent of this agreement. The Ashby Select Board remains steadfast in its support for Ashby Elementary School and its vital role in our community. Just five months ago, the school was thriving. We believe it can and should continue to serve the educational needs of our students. We urge that the committee to take the necessary steps to reopen Ashby Elementary in August 2022nd, or 2026, and reaffirm its commitment to equitable education across all member towns. On the behalf of the Ashby Select Board, Paula Rosa, Chair." I do want to state something about the regional agreement. The regional agreement that they're referring to, the new regional agreement, is one that has not been ratified by all three towns, and so that one has not been adopted into our policy. We are still on a regional agreement that was agreed upon in the 50s, and then I think there was amendment in the 90s to the regional agreement. Alright, moving on to other things in my chairman's report. News and communication relations. Congratulations to Rebecca Adet, selected as the 2025 Science Educator of the Year. She works at Hawthorne Brook Middle School. Congratulations, Rebecca. North Middlesex was awarded more than $18,000 in state STEM grant funding, and I believe down below that Dr. Reese will discuss this. Patriots happenings in the district, we have Nissitisit will be performing The Lightning Thief, The Percy Jackson Musical. This is November 20th and 21st at 7:00 PM, and November 22nd at 2:00 PM. With adults $5, students and seniors $2. I recommend that everyone go and see the play. I heard that it's going to be great. And on Thursday, November 20th, there is a school funding discussion. This is held, going to be held at Groton Dunspole Middle School, and it is from 6 to 8. I know that Superintendent Morgan will be one of the speakers that evening, and also some of our state representatives and select people. Alright, moving on. Natalie Stupak, do you have a report for the committee?
I do. It's a little brief this month, but from the student council and class offices, they ran a successful Veterans Day event, I think on the 7th. And then sports, they're starting to wind down with some teams entering playoffs and others already completing their seasons. The drama-like department had their production of the show Our Town on the 13th, 14th, and 14th, and then AP test payments were due last week. And I think that's everything.
Thank you, Natalie.
Thanks, Natalie.
Alright, you can jump off, that's fine, Natalie. I know that you probably have work to do. Have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
Alright, moving on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Morgan?
Sure, just a few items to update the committee on. Some members of the central office team met with the Boston Globe reporter, Chris Huffaker, who specializes in educational inequities. He's a reporter for the Globe, but a subset of the Globe called The Great Divide. We met last Friday to discuss the current funding formula and how it continues to negatively impact NM. I'm not sure where it is going, whether or not there'll be a story coming out from him on this, but I know he is planning to reach out to some other regional school districts, not necessarily close to NM, but to try to get something that is, I would say statewide. So I know he's gonna be reaching out to a regional school up in the North Shore and possibly one out in the western part of the state as well. And then the hope is, is that he will generate a story from that regarding the Chapter 70 funding formula. School start time, as many of you are aware, the district was asked as part of an 11th grade civic action project to look at start times specifically at the high school. This was also recently brought up by a staff member at the high school. So I did speak with the staff member recently, just to talk about whether or not this individual would be willing to head up a start time committee, so we can start investigating whether or not this is something we should consider. The hope is that I will hear from this individual within the next week or so, and if it is a go, and this person's going to be the chair of the committee, I would like to make this really a a committee that has all stakeholders from the NM community involved. So we're hearing from staff, students, families, and community members, so that we get really a thorough study of this and really get, hear all opinions, because I know there are lots of opinions around start time. The high school does, I believe, have the earliest start time in the state. I do believe it's also one of the earliest start times in the country as well. So it is something that is certainly worth looking at and looking to see, again, if this is something that the district can consider. Obviously, we'll be looking at some of the challenges that may impact that, primarily around busing, so certainly look at that, and I will keep the committee apprised of that. Today, I was able to testify with the Education Joint Committee at the State House. I did this virtually, and it was on Special Education Circuit Breaker to advocate for increased funding. Chuck Wakovich from the Pepperell Board of Selectment also testified in person. So thank you, Chuck, for going in, in person into the city again. I'm sure it was busy, but greatly appreciate your support, and he was pushing for the increased funding as well, so again, I think we're getting to a point where we, I mean, really nothing has happened with regard to funding, but they are certainly giving us the opportunity to speak and be heard. Hopefully, you know, we spoke multiple times last year at the State House. We spoke again today at the State House, and we have the event in Groton Thursday evening, so the hope is, is that we can keep this positive momentum moving forward, so that our funding concerns are addressed at the state level. That's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For speaking at the State House or via the internet, and thank you, Chuck Wakovich, for speaking as well today. Alright, moving on to the Assistant Superintendent's report. Dr. Reese.
Nothing at this time. I'll have some information further down on the grants.
Alright, I want to tell everybody right now, we're moving ahead of schedule, so let's keep it that way, and go forward. Alright, out of state overnight field trip. I think this is Chantel Almstead.
Alright. Hi.
Go ahead.
Our six through eight band is looking to take a trip to Hershey, Pennsylvania. The trip will include a stop in Amish country, a performance in Hershey where they will compete and also receive feedback from a number of judges. Students will then get to enjoy the park at Hershey Park. The third day is a Saturday. On their way home, they're gonna stop in Gettysburg for a historical experience before arriving back at home at about 7:30 at night. The band has been planning for this for a few years, and students have been fundraising for it. I know some members have fundraised enough to just about cover the entire cost of the field trip. Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions? Randy?
I'm just curious, when my, my kids were in band in, at Hawthorne Brook, I believe it was three different trips for the sixth through eighth grade that they rotated through. Hershey Park being one of them, there was Mystic, and for the life of me, I can't remember the third one, I apologize. Is that still happening, where this is just rotating between those different events?
So I believe Mystic is still happening. That happened last year as well, and then I know there is another field trip that happens kind of at the end of the year that is open to all band members. And that is a bit closer to home, to New Hampshire, to I'm blanking on the name of the park they all go to, but a few different opportunities.
Is it Canterbury Park?
Yeah, uh, yeah, I think so. Keenan, you went on it, right? Yeah.
Yes, so Randy's answer, it's a three-year rotation that kind of got messed up by COVID. It's Newport, Rhode Island, Mystic, Connecticut, and Hershey. Rotates every year.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then Canterbury every year, yeah.
Yeah, I am happy that that is still going on. I think this is a very worthwhile opportunity for the band students to go. You know, obviously, play out in public is something that a lot of students don't get a chance to do. I think going as a band, especially we tend to have large bands, going on these trips together overnight is, is a really good bonding experience for them, so I am all in favor of this.
Thank you. I agree, it's a great opportunity for the students of NM. May I take a motion? Or any other questions first? Alright, now a motion.
I will move that the school committee vote to approve the Hawthorne Brook Middle School Band Students Overnight Field Trip beginning on May 28th through May 30th, 2025, to Hershey, Pennsylvania for the Music in the Parks Festival.
Hi, Saka.
2026, I think, right?
Oh, did I say five? Yeah. That would be 26, you're right.
Oh, yeah. 26.
Six, yep. Sorry, I was just reading the agenda.
That's okay. It is on the 26th, so it's May 28th through May 30th.
2026.
26. Alright, and that was Randy, and then Lisa Bloom on a second. Alright, roll call vote. Alexander Bancooty.
Yes.
Carla Lima.
Yes.
Jackie White.
Yes.
Kim Craven.
Yes.
Keenan Francois.
Yes.
Lisa Bloom.
Yes.
Randy Rush.
Yes.
Mike La Bossier.
Yes.
Alright, and myself is yes. That was a unanimous. Good luck to the students and have a fun trip.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on, the second item under new business is Special Education Update. This will be presented by Erin Upton, our Special Education Director.
Hi, thank you. I did share a slide deck. I don't know if you'd like me to present that, or just read through the slides that are, that should be in your packet.
You can go ahead and present it. I will give you privileges.
Thank you.
She's all set to present.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, Robin. I was hoping you'd show up.
Alright. Can you view that okay? When I see you, I can't see what I'm showing now. Great, tonight I wanted to update some highlights with some progress across special education operations, specifically the digital systems compliance, programming, staffing, and fiscal impact. So this year, we made a successful shift to integrating our special education programming into Aspen, so that teachers now have immediate access to student IEPs. This will hopefully increase consistency in the implementation of accommodations, so that is general education teachers, special education teachers, specialists. The teachers that are listed on the student's schedule are able to view each student's IEP, and the accommodations are easily accessible for them, so they, we don't have to balance between two systems. We've also changed the way that parents are receiving progress reports throughout the school year, so that they're receiving them the same way they currently receive report cards through the Aspen portal. They can view them in there for a limited amount of time, and then they'll be available under documents in their parent portal. In addition to the cost savings that we discussed last year, when we made this shift, this transition has also reduced some of our paper and printing costs overall. Staff seem to be really adapting. We have some learning curves to master the system, but overall, it's going really well. We also are in our first year of full implementation using the Xerox Translation App. Families can now receive translated documents at the same time as English versions of the documents, which really strengthens compliance and improves our equitable communication with families. The app has also reduced our translation expenses, but we are still using Baystate to provide meeting interpretation and any, any other verbal interpretation that we require. Let me know if I need to pause for any questions, please, or if you'd like me to go through everything and stop me at the end. Currently, okay. Currently, we have 25% of our students qualify for special education services. Of the 25%, approximately 10% require out-of-district placements, and we are physically responsible for 9% of the students that are placed out of district. Since July 1st, we've also had students, several students exit out-of-district placements for reasons such as aging out, moving out of district, reintegration into our in-district programs, or withdrawals dropping out. This, the student, number of students exiting has resulted in a, an overall cost reduction of $1.3 million. However, I want to mention that that number is very fluid, because it can change if we have students move into the district, or if our in-district students who are currently being supported require more intensive programming during the school year. So at the end of the school year, there is a concern that this could still end with a negative balance in our out-of-district tuition accounts. We have been exploring some partnerships to strengthen our in-district programs to better meet the needs of our students in the district. So we feel as though this would really help them to remain in their community and part of NM. So we're pursuing partnerships with Landmark School and New England Consortium for Children. The Landmark Partnership will support the development of a language-based program at the middle and high school, and the partnership with New England Consortium for Children, or NEC, will assist in building an in-district intensive needs ABA-based program. Although this would result in a cost savings for out-of-district tuitions, it will require us to hire additional special education staff to support the students. We have continued to have a vacancy for a full-time speech-language pathologist. So we are currently contracting external services to address this need, and for the second year, we've had, we also had an opening with our job coach for the Gateway Program. This is a .6 FTE position that we've been unable to fill. So the contracting with speech and language services is a temporary measure, of course, while we continue to try to recruit someone to work for the district. In terms of the job posting, the job coach, I apologize, the Gateway staff have been doing their best to try to cover some of the job coaching responsibilities to support the students and make sure that they are, you know, constantly exploring additional job sites, giving students on-the-job experiences, as well as providing some development opportunities in the classroom setting to help them to develop the skills they need to be in the workforce. So we have we have had some changes in requirements for, in order to meet compliance. Over the summer, the state changed the requirement for processing paperwork through the Special Education Office. We previously had 10 school days to process documents. We now have five school days to process these documents. In addition, we are also, as special education administrators, now required to attend all of the eligibility determination meetings, so any meeting involving an evaluation. So this includes students referred for initial testing, students referred for reevaluation, or additional assessments to review an outside evaluation, all of those sorts of things. So this has really made it challenging for the, the Special Education Administration to meet compliance, while we, and, you know, really supporting the staff as well. So we continue to monitor workload, continue to explore ways to maintain this compliance, but we have needed to add a one FTE evaluation team leader, so that we can restructure our administration. so that we can restructure our administrative roles and ensure compliance with the state requirements. So the things, um, in summary, what's working, um, we've made a smooth transition to Aspen for I E P management. Um, educators have immediate access to the current student accommodations. This improves instructional consistency. Um, parents are receiving I E P progress reports through the portal, which increases transparency and access. Um, the Xerox translation app is allowing families to receive translated documents at the same time as English versions, improving equitable communication and reducing translation costs. Um, we have some early reductions in out-of-district costs. Um, we are working on building our in district programming. Um, and, you know, what we need is to fill these unfilled positions and continue as a district to invest in our specialized programs.
Is that complete, Erin? You're done?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I was.
Sorry.
Are there any questions? Randy.
Uh, thank you for that presentation. I really appreciate, uh, hearing a little bit more about that and especially the successes that we're having about bringing some of the students back into our district. Um, everything that I've heard over the last, you know, sixteen years is just how important it is to these students to be in their own environment and their own communities, um, to be able to get their education. So thank you for everything that you're doing with that. Um, and I know you were saying that you're looking at bringing more, uh, programs in to be able to bring in more students. Um, do you have any kind of an idea of, um, uh, space requirements that you're gonna be needing for different pro, um, programs that are gonna be coming in this way? We can make sure, because obviously we, we've been having a lot of budget issues and we're looking at space very carefully. I want to make sure that, uh, we at least have in mind that we're not going to constrain our capacity too much to be able to get the benefits for the students and for the district of bringing more, uh, in-house.
So, um, thank you for recognizing the successes that we're starting to have in, in terms of reducing overall costs and keeping our students in the district. We are definitely looking at the space. Um, we are looking at maybe shifting some of our in district programs, um, as well. Um, to, you know, have more equity across the district. Um. We, in terms of the space requirements, we definitely do have some space available, um, for these programs, specifically. Um, the language-based program, um, right now, um, is, would be a smaller cohort of students, um, but there's a lot of co-teaching involved with that. It's really a partnership, not just with special education, but with the general education teachers. And the partnership helps to develop, um, good practices for co-teaching models, um, not just for the, um, small group instruction. In terms of the, um, N E C partnership for the A B A programming, I apologize for not mentioning that this would also be an opportunity for us to potentially tuition in some students. So if we had, um, some of our students attending the program, we could potentially leave a few, um, open slots and tuition students in from neighboring districts. There's definitely a high need in our area for such programming. Our just, our students travel, you know, a, a good, you know, two to three hours a day trying to get to high-quality programming, and I really believe that we could do just as good, if not a better, job in district.
Jackie.
Thank you, Erin. Your slides were really great, actually. Commend you on those. Um, question on the speech language pathologist and the job coach. Have we had those positions before? Is it a matter of, like, we're not offering salaries that those positions typically look for? Or is it something else that you think is hindering that search?
Yep. Good questions. Um, so with speech and language, there is a nationwide shortage of professionals. Um, more and more speech and language pathologists in general, those who are out there are really seeking more opportunities with contracting through agencies because they can, um, they can receive a, a greater per hour rate for their services. Um, so in general, it's not, that's not an issue unique to us. We are actually in a better place than, than some of our, our neighboring districts who have, um, more openings for speech and language pathologists. So fortunately, you know, there are, are staff that really want to work here and, and commit to our district. Um, I don't, um, necessarily think it's a salary piece. I do think that it is a critical shortage of staff. In terms of the, um, the job coach, we've had, um, really little to no interest in that position. Um, since the person who left the position, um, in two thousand and twenty four to become a teacher and is doing a wonderful job at that. Um, I'm not sure if it could be the, the part-time status of that where it's a point six, it, you know, it, it definitely, it's a three-day-a-week position, um, which could be preventing applicants from expressing interest in applying.
Any more questions for Ms. Upton? Kim?
Thank you. Uh, great presentation, really informative. Um, when you talk about some other programs that you'd like to integrate in, is there a way, um, for you to compile some of the things that you think are the best programs in the other areas that you think might be beneficial to bring here? Um, just for future consideration, you know, to keep us informed of what those might be, what they might look like. Um, I know just, you know, sort of peripheral on some of the, the programs that they have some unique offerings that we might not be able to, to offer, but maybe we can discuss about, um, any community-based resources or what that might look like. Because I know we can't replicate everything for every program that's out there.
Of course, absolutely. We, um, we selected these two programs because we do have, um, cohorts of students that were currently um, placed out of district, um, and we felt as though, um, it would be, you know, a, a two to three years, you know, initiative to really, this would be a pre-planning year and then hopefully year one of implementation would be next year for these. Um, we have explored, um, some other programs for, um, students requiring therapeutic needs. Um, we currently feel as though we are adequately supporting the students that we do have in district. Um, and you're right, we wouldn't be able to mirror exactly what they're receiving in their current out-of-district placements.
And you mentioned transition. I did have a question on that. Um, so looking to, to get this up and running for next year. And then, you know, for, you know, maximum utilization, do you think that's a, a three-to-five-year turn for the out-of-district families to want to come back? Um, what do you think for that? Because I know it's gonna take some investment on the, on the front end, um, with, they come back. But have you, um, thought about that at this time?
Yes, um, so we, um, we do have several families that want their children to be educated in our schools, um, but we don't currently have the programming. So um, we do feel as though if we're able to develop the programming, um, in especially utilizing these partnerships with experts who have had great successes with building programs and developing them, that families will want to, um, bring their children back into the district. Yes, so this year one would be identifying those students and communicating with those families about our plans.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? So I am going to ask you, Ms. Upton, if there is a document, because when I first started the school committee, there was a document that listed all the programs that we offered in special education and just gave a brief, brief description. And given that the school committee has a lot of new members, they may not know all of these acronyms around it or what we talk about, would you be able just to provide us a document that says what the programs are? Maybe where they're housed at right now and things like that? I don't want any numbers.
Yes.
Behind them. I just want a description of what the program is.
Absolutely, yep, we absolutely have that. And I, it would, I appreciate you mentioning that with, um, some of the new members. It would be important to, to share with them that we do have the full spectrum of programming within the district, um, and it is some really strong programming. Yes, so I can, um, should I share that with, um, Mr. Morgan?
Yep, share it with, um, Mr. Morgan, and then he can send it around to all of us. And then, if anyone has questions about that, the programs, you can reach out to Brad and I, and then we can direct them to Erin, if that works for everyone.
Erin, if you could include me as well, then I will, I'll keep it in the.
Oh, yes.
Many documents.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin can probably forward it for all of us to everyone to make sure we all have everything. So, thank you, Robin. All right, moving, anyone else have any questions? All right, moving on, we are going to the Sims report, and that is Jeremy Hammond, our operations director. Is that, that's your title, right, Jeremy?
Yes.
An I T. All right. All right, Jeremy.
Uh, hello, uh, so Sims is not overly exciting. Sims is a, uh, report that we or really it's a data transmission that we provide to the state. Uh, they get a ongoing, uh, update of student data from our district and all districts within the state. Uh, but three times a year we are asked to certify it after a fairly lengthy cleanup process. Uh, the reports that are provided in your packets are the summary reports that we get back. Uh, there are a few others, but these were the most pertinent. The others tend to be, um, kind of break down within some of that. Uh, also, there are not as many reports as the numbers would indicate because the state has retired several reports, but don't update the report numbers. Uh, so this year our total enrollment for Sims, uh, which is Student Information Management System, for anyone interested, uh, is two thousand seven hundred and sixty-four for the district. Uh, that is down from the previous year, uh, but we have been in a steady decline for quite some time now, aside from the initial recovery coming out of COVID. Uh, so that is not entirely unusual for the district. I guess I'll just jump to questions.
Does anyone have any questions about the Sims report? Randy?
I understand that numbers aren't, uh, very exciting to a lot of different people. Um, I was wondering if at some point, again, no rush on this, um, but some context for some of these numbers, um, maybe the last year or two, so we can see the trends, um, of how much we're losing in the district. Um, you know, by grade or, you know, however, but to represent this i- in a more graphical form for the school committee so that we can actually understand why this information matters and how it impacts the district would be great.
Sure.
All right, anyone else have any questions about the Sims report? All right, thank you, Mr. Hammond, and thank you, Ms. Upton, for the lovely reports. All right, anyone else? All right, we are on to the grants. And if we can do these in six minutes, we're ahead of schedule. Gary.
Wow, that's a, that's a.
You got six minutes.
Okay, so I have a number of grants to share with you this evening, so exciting to be bringing in some money to the district. Um, the first is the STEM Equipment in Professional Development Grant for eighteen thousand, six hundred fifty-one dollars. This is through the Massachusetts Life Science Center from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Um, this grant, actually, the, we were, received notification of the award in the summer, and I apologize. I had thought we had it already approved it in a prior month and recently became aware that we had not gone through the process with school committee. So my apologies there. Um, essentially, the funding from this grant is going to be used, is being used for replenishing and updating Lego kits that are used through our middle school STEM programming. So it's materials that we've already had and have already been used as part of our curriculum, and it's just to update uh, lost Legos, things like that, um, and replenish the kits so they're current, um, for our two middle school programs. And the request for this was initiated through our middle school principals, um, to, to apply for and secure this grant. Do you want me to go through each one, or do you want to take each one individually?
Is everyone okay? We go through each one or and then just approve them all at the end? All right, let's go. You keep presenting, and if we have any questions.
Great, so I may go out of order just from what's on the agenda, just because some fit better. So the next one is the Safe and Supportive Schools Continuation Grant for ten thousand dollars. This is also through the Department of Education. It's a continuation grant, meaning that we've received this grant last year, which allowed us last year to conduct a self-assessment in our Safe and Supportive Schools programs. Based on that assessment, we identified, the team identified an area that they wanted to continue to work on this year, which was professional development needs around safe and supportive schools for students. And this grant funding will allow us to provide some professional development support for our guidance staff as well as staff as a whole. Similar to that, we have the Supporting Arts and Cultural Vitality Teams Grant for the, in the amount of thirteen thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars. There's an index that the state has developed in order to assess what our arts programs or what arts programs in schools look like, to be able to identify strengths and needs, identify opportunities for growth. It really forces us to look at data within our arts programs and be able to identify where we're doing things well and where we, where we have some opportunity for growth. Um, it's about looking specifically around access, around equity, and around cultural sustainability. So it's, it's a great opportunity, and similar to the Safe and Supportive Schools Grant that we got last year, the hope is that we'll have a team this year that will conduct the self-assessment, be able to identify some areas for growth that we then can use to inform potential budgetary decisions, as well as hopefully be able to apply for a subsequent grant, grant next year to continue the work that we identified through that grant. We also had received the Interpreter in the Education Setting Grant for five thousand dollars. Um, you heard Mrs. Upton talk earlier about the costs associated with providing translation services for families. Um, this grant will allow us to provide some, um, to get people trained through the NatTissel, which is the National Association of Educational Translators and Interpreters of Spoken Language Organization. They actually provide a certification for people to specifically be able to provide translation services in an educational setting. This will allow us to do some training for staff that might, may be multilingual within the district, and then we can access those individuals as opposed to contracting out, which tends to be, um, much more money because they have minimum requirements when they come out to do any type of translation. So it's typically at least two hundred dollars every time they come in to do a parent meeting, regardless of the amount of time. So that is a five thousand dollar grant. Um, and then the last two are part of the Fair Share Airmark. Um, so in June, Governor Healy signed a one point three billion supplemental budget, which was really focused around investing in education and transportation across the Commonwealth. Um, we're very appreciative to our local legislators who advocated for funding for North Middlesex. We're able to get two different airmarks identified for that grant. The first one was a hundred fifty thousand, and that was identified, um, at the state level for the repaving, um, of the front travel, traffic circle and parking lot at Varnum Brook. And then two hundred fifty thousand dollars was also earmarked in this, um, supplemental budget that Governor Healy signed for infrastructure upgrades, um, in the district. And, um, after having some conversations with the facilities department, with the operations department, and looking at what current buildings we have online and what then their needs are, the three areas that we're looking at under this grant are, um, for all its, uh, Spalding Memorial. The first is around the fire and enunciator panels, um, and, um, strobes and horns and detection devices. Uh, the second is for the main ex, entrance exterior door replacement, uh, keeping in mind the historical aspects of the building as well as the security needs, um, and then also renovations to the woodwork and columns on the turnpike entrance side, and also the parking lot, uh, paving, bus drop-off pavement, curbing, and protective medium, median, um, so some additional paving work there. So those are the three. So those are the three areas that we're currently looking at and getting some quotes for as part of this grant. This earmark is coming into the district through a grant and that's why we're bringing these forward to the school committee for consideration and vote. And that was probably more than six minutes, but I tried.
Hey, it's okay. You did good. Only one minute over, so you did good, Gary. All right, anyone have any questions? Randy?
Just a really quick one. Reading through these, it doesn't appear that any of these have ongoing costs after we implement these. I just wanted to make sure that I was reading that properly.
You are reading that properly.
Thank you.
All right, Jackie?
These are great. Who does all of the grant writing? Like, are teachers expected to do some of that? Are you doing it, Gary?
So, so I do much of the grant writing. The STEM Equipment and PD grant was actually written by Diane Gleason at the request of the middle school principals, but the others that I've been working on.
Nice.
And it's typically a team effort, depending on what the content or topic is, to, to be able to write a grant and secure one of these competitive grants.
Fantastic. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Gary, that leads me to a question. How many grants do we apply for usually? What would you say that we?
It, it varies. You know, I, we, we look very closely at the grants that are being presented from the state, make sure they are in alignment with what our needs are and what our goals are and that we're not overextending ourselves. We also look very carefully, as, as Randy had asked, like, is there any requirement after the grant period and what's the implications to our budget? So we try to avoid those. But we, we try to apply for as many that we can, that we fit and that wouldn't overburden us and would benefit the district.
That's a good answer. Thank you, Gary. All right, anyone else have any questions? Okay, I'll take a motion on these grants.
Being that these are monetary, I will make the motion, but I'm going to mention the
Yep, exactly.
The name and the amount. So I'm going to move that the school committee accept the Arts and Cultural Vitality Teams Grant totaling 13,725 and the STEM Equipment and Professional Development Grant from Massachusetts Life Sciences Center, Commonwealth of Massachusetts totaling 18,651. The $5,000 Interpreter in the Education Setting Grant, the $10,000 Safe and Supportive Schools Continuation Grant, and the Fair Share earmark for $250,000 and the Fair Share earmark grant for $150,000.
My second. Right, that was Randy and Lisa Bloom on the second. All right, it's a roll call vote. Keenan Francois?
Yes.
Kim Craven?
Yes.
Jackie White?
Yes.
Carla Lima?
Yes.
Alexander Bancuti?
Yes.
Mike La Boy Cier, La Bossiere?
Yes.
Randy Rush?
Yes.
Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Congratulations, Dr. Reese, and thank the team for applying for the grants.
So like, thank you, everyone.
All right, moving on to the building capacity discussion. So in the packet, you will see that was included some projects that are happening in Pepperell. There are two projects before we move on to some of the building capacity, why this is on the agenda. I have to get to my, so there's the Leighton project in Pepperell, Leighton Landing project. And then there is what's the name of the other one?
Woodland Ridge?
Yep, Woodland. So the two projects are happening within Pepperell. Some background about these is that they were started in in early September was the Leighton project and the Woodland Ridge was late October. So they both have to complete this process of filing for the 100-day window and then they have a 30-day appeals process after. So then that's when the ground clearing and construction can happen. And Pepperell right now is predicting that this could happen as early as spring and summer of 2026. Both projects have a 12- to 30-month first units to be completed. To the final, final build-out will probably take longer. They believe that students will be hitting the district in the year 27, 28. And more likely, we're going to see more students hit the 28, 29. And then the full build, they believe, will be out 29, 30. And so that's the information that I received from Pepperell, along with information that is in your packet about what each of the projects is. And then they predict, I think it was 50 to 70 students maybe coming into the district from these projects. Anything that I missed from that section? All right, then I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Morgan about capacity within our buildings.
So everyone should have received what I'm calling really a very rough draft. And this is our first run-through of available classrooms, both full-size classrooms and small classrooms and offices in the district. And as you can see, and there have been a couple of updates that have, that have happened, probably since you have received this, but we do have a fairly large number of rooms. And we do have some flexibility within the district. And realistically, there could be even a shift in that if we were to move some of our special education programs to Townsend next year, creating potentially even more space in Pepperell. Because if, if you were to take the STEPS program, for instance, if that were to be moved to Townsend, that would open up five additional classrooms at Varnum Brook, which already has three classrooms available and an additional four classrooms at Nissat Tisset, which has six, six full-size classrooms already available to potentially look at, again, moving programs. And if we have to, even looking at, you know, looking at the grade levels that we're offering in our buildings. You know, central office is currently at the high school. It doesn't necessarily have to stay there. You know, there's, there could be an argument that, you know, eighth grade would would be a good move for the high school because it could potentially help retain students in the district rather than going elsewhere. I know that, you know, using Baroka High as an example, they did that when they built their new high school. They included eighth grade in hopes of not losing students after their eighth grade year, whether it be to Shoshin Tech or Austin Prep or something along those lines. So there's flexibility there and that potentially could help with potential shifts to the middle school levels. So again, I, I think right now, and this is a rough draft, but we do have a significant amount of space that is still available in the district as far as open classrooms go. So there is certainly room for growth. I know that the, the Pepperell project is, is looking at in the vicinity of 60 students. The challenge is, you know, you just don't know what grade level those students are going to be at. You know, unfortunately, you know, one of the battles that we are dealing with right now is that all of the new students that we're getting in the district seem to be focused in two grade levels, which is creating, again, some class size issues. So it never works out perfectly, but again, based on the class size, excuse me, based on the room availability at all three levels, there's definitely room for looking at the grade levels that are being offered in our buildings, how the district is, you know, divided with regard to districting goes. And there are certainly some options that we could look at and consider if space becomes an issue. But right now, there, there is certainly space that's available in the district and we will do a deeper dive into this just to make sure these numbers are really, really solid with regard to what's being reported back to us.
Any questions? Randy?
As you complete this, and I understand it's a rough draft and it's hard to go, qualifiers in here as far as, you know, understanding where these classrooms are, I'm assuming that they are based on the current configuration right now with the really high class sizes. And therefore, if we hopefully very soon get enough money to go back to the lower class sizes that we're used to in the district, that would be, I believe it was like one class per grade that was cut for this year. That, so Nissat Tisset would be four classrooms, at, at Varnum Brook would be five classrooms that they would need to go back to the class sizes that we had before. So I want to make sure that when we're looking at the capacity, it's not in the moment right now because we need to take a look at what do we want to achieve, which is we don't want 28 to 30 in a classroom. We want the 22 to 24. You know, or something in that range per classroom. We don't want, you know, to be looking at just right now when, you know, 60 more kids may put it over to another class size that we may need another classroom over in Pepperell for those students. The other thing also is I was looking at a study that NASDAQ, that was in our drive from NASDAQ from 2021, don't know how pertinent it still is with the information that was showing that by 2031, 2021 to 20, 2031, we were going to be growing a little bit. It shows us having about another 200 students from where we are this year. Don't know if that still applies. Not sure if additional growth was put into that model or not. So again, school committee, we are, we should be very concerned with the long-term growth, the long-term viability of the district and not just a couple of years right now where we're sitting here, possibly not an ideal conditions for capacity.
And I would just add to that, as far as considerations of space go, we're certainly not looking just in the moment. If you look at the high school alone, which was built for considerably more students than it currently has, the high school as a standalone would provide a significant amount of flexibility to the district if it were looking to potentially add an eighth grade to that building. That would provide a potentially significant amounts of room at the middle schools or possibly at the elementary schools if you shift the fourth grade up to the middle school level and do a four-to-seven model or something along those lines. So just, just to put it out there, you know, central office can be mobile if need be. But if you look at the high school and the fact that there's six classrooms available right now, plus the small rooms, and then you take all the central office classrooms, you've got a significant amount of space to, to move the eighth grade in and still have room for growth.
I'm, I'm just asking that those qualifiers are put in somewhere that we understand, you know, what these, you know, you know, basically, the the class sizes, what, what this is based on, where the information is. Things like at the high school that if we can bring eighth grade in there, there's capacity there, central office can move, as well as take into account Ms. Upton's you know, plan to bring in some more students on how much space we need for special education because we know special education tends to need a little bit more room than the standard general classrooms. So again, just documenting all the thoughts that go into so that we can look at this and understand and be on the same page.
Absolutely.
Keenan?
Yeah, just, what were the two, you referenced two grade levels that are getting the influx of students right now? Which levels were those?
It is, it is K in six.
Thank you.
And at the elementary levels, we didn't eliminate one teacher at each level, did we?
No, it, it was dependent, it was dependent on class sizes. So I would have to go back and look at, look at the specific reductions that were made. But it was, it was based on class sizes and it did not work out to the point where it was one at every grade level. It was different.
All right, Carla?
Yeah, you mentioned potentially consolidating eighth grade to high school and then potentially bringing up, you know, fourth grade to middle school. Is that a common practice where fourth graders will be combined as a middle schooler? And my only question is based on, you know, their, you know, middle schoolers have a different mentality than, you know, elementary school students and their development. Is that common that we see? Fourth graders joining in with, you know, seventh grader or sixth grader?
I would say that the most common models that are out there when it comes to school configurations that involve a middle school and certainly I would ask Dr. Reese to weigh in as well, would be a K to eight model or a six, seven, eight model. Those tend to be more popular models. And oftentimes, you, oftentimes, if possible, the fifth and eighth grade are separated. But if the eighth grade is, is moved, you're not, you're not gaining, it's still the same amount of years between the fourth and the seventh grade. And I'm not saying it's something that, that has to happen. It could be something that the district could consider if they needed to consider it down the road. Because if you move the eighth grade up, which does seem doable if the district wanted to do that. And as I mentioned earlier, that could have a positive impact on retaining students in the district. That does create a situation where we have a significant amount of space in our middle schools. And even if we bring special education programs in, they have to be grade level appropriate in the building. So we can't, for instance, and please, Ms. Upton, correct me if I'm wrong, take, you know, K to eight middle school, excuse me, K to eight special ed program and, and put it at the middle school if it doesn't match the K to eight special ed programming. You'd have to have the, the younger kids with their like peers, if that makes sense. So it, it's really just looking at space and options, these things that the district wants to consider. You know, I, I know, you know, the district has thought of other things, you know, looking at and, you know, in the past, do we want to have a seven, eight model in one middle school and a five, six model in the other middle school? You know, that realistically, at this point, would, transportation, I think, would, would be a significant issue with that, with getting that done. I think that would be a, a real problem, especially where transportation issues now seem to have, they seem to be few and far between compared to years past.
Thank you.
Alexander?
Yeah, I just wanted to weigh in considering I am a middle school teacher. So, yeah, the, the eight to, eight to, you know, the eight to 12 model isn't really super common, but it's not really unheard of. Actually, when I went to, when I was in fourth grade, fourth grade was at the middle school in Pepperell. Now, this was, but I can't even do the math right now. Late 90s, 1998, 99. So there, that actually was, you know, it was Varnum Brook at the time was fourth through eight back then, but, you know, I worked at Lunenburg Middle High School and they're literally six to 12, so it's not super common, but it's not, it's not too weird. I remember when I was in Varnum Brook as a kid, fourth and fifth grade kind of had their own, you know, the newer wing of, of Varnum, it was like the fourth and fifth grade section. And so we were kind of like sectioned off and I imagine that's kind of how it would work is like fourth and fifth grade, you know, on, in, you know, one area and sixth and seventh grade in a different area. I'm, I'm sure they'd be able to manage it. I'm, I'm sure they'd be able to manage it.
All right, Carla, do you have another question?
Yeah, just following up to that. I appreciate that and, and, and I get it. And I know this is just, you know, um, Mr. Morgan, just giving ideas. It's nothing, you know, that we're even, you know, putting in paper. But that's just a little concern for me because fourth graders going home in the school bus with seventh graders. Just, you know, there are different mentalities and development and I'm comparing, you know, my son plays with fourth graders now and, you know, would I be okay with him playing with someone that has a different grade level? So, but I think, you know, six and seven and, you know, I could see them being lumped in together since there is usually a growth in that sixth grade level, as you're saying that we have now as well. So, um, I appreciate that, um, Alexander, as well, you sharing that.
All right. Any other questions on building capacity?
Just, just one more comment on, on, on the age spans. It just, just asks the committee that obviously I know this is a concern anytime you talk about changing age spans, especially when it involves K to eight. But I would just also add that K to eight is one of the most popular models out there. And it's, it happens in a lot of our urban districts. I know, you know, looking at Lowell, Cambridge, Brookline, you know, larger districts like that have a K to eight model where they have kindergarteners and eighth graders on the bus together, but they're also, they also carefully monitor how those bus rides happen, um, to make sure that supervision is in place and that assigned seats and things of that nature. Certainly not looking to go in that direction, but just showing that, you know, along with the, along with the space, we may have to consider some flexibility with regard to grade assignments in our schools as well.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. Superintendent Morgan?
Thank you.
Now moving on to SE Goals and Workshop. I'd like to place, um, on the calendar that we would have an in-person December eleventh meeting of the school committee to continue to do or set our goals and different processes and procedures. If people could attend that, I know that we tried for November one, but that just did not happen with everyone's schedule. So if I could just, everyone raise their hand if they could come to the December eleventh meeting and then we can one, two, three, if we get a consensus. All right.
Sorry, just, just double checking. This would be December eleventh in the, in the evening?
Yes. Yes. And it'd be like setting our goals and, um, doing that meeting. One, two, three. So that would be five, at least five. So that would be a quorum. Five to six. All right. So we're going to set a meeting for December eleventh and this will be discussion, um, around goals. What else is in? I'm blanking right now, Randy. What is the other? Goals?
The, um, protocols and norms?
Protocols, yes, protocols and norms. So that's what this meeting would entail. It'd be a workshop on those. Nothing would be voted on, but we would bring it forward to the next meeting, which is the following week to be voted on. All right. Moving on, we are going to go into executive session. Could I have someone read the motion?
I will make a motion to meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A for the following purpose. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Superintendent of Schools.
That is Lisa White or not Lisa White? Lisa Bloom, sorry. That is Jackie White making the motion and Lisa Bloom seconding it. All right. And it requires a roll call vote. Alexander?
Yes.
Randy Rush, Rush?
Yes.
Kim Craven?
Yes.
Jackie White?
Yes.
Mike La Bossiere?
Yes.
Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
Lisa Bloom? Keenan Francois?
Yes.
Carla? Carla Lima?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And so the, the public is aware we will be reconvening in open session. So I ask that everyone log off of Zoom, not every, not the audience, but all of the members log off of Zoom and come back in.
We'll wait for everyone to join back in.
Yeah, and then we just need another roll call when everyone joins back in. Uh, just for the committee members.
Okay.
Oops, sorry, hold on. Kim and Carla are joining now.
Okay. Kim, Carla, Lisa, Keenan, Randy. Are Michael and Alexander back in as well? Not yet.
Um, not yet, hold on. Oh, I'm promoting them now.
Okay.
Um. Oh, there he is. Like, Michael's coming in now.
Okay. All right.
I am here now.
All right, thank you, Michael. All right, we are reconvening in open session for the school committee. And I need a roll call vote. So Keenan Francois.
Here.
Kim Craven.
Here.
Lisa Bloom.
Yeah.
Randy Rush.
Here.
Alexander Bancooty. Alexander. Oh, you're on mute, or I can't hear you. Okay, thumbs up, Alexander is here.
Yep.
Um, Michael La Boyce Bossiere.
Here.
And myself, or, oh, Carla Lima.
Here.
All right, we are all here. Moving on in the agenda. Our next item is to the appointments, correct?
Yep.
Um, so I had Michael La Boyce here, who I did not introduce. He is a new member that was appointed by the Pe- by Pepperell Select Board and the Pepperell representatives of the school committee. So, Michael, will you take a few seconds and just introduce yourself to the committee?
Sure, yeah, so my name is Mike La Bossiere. Um, I've lived in Pepperell since 2009. Um, and I have a seventh grader, uh, Nissat Tissett, um, who is, uh, you know, he very, he loves school very much and, you know, so I wanted to join the committee, be part of, you know, contributing to making, you know, the district the best it can be for him and all the other students, uh, in the district, so. And, uh, by day, I'm a software engineer.
All right, welcome, Michael. Uh, Mike or Michael?
Mike, I ju- Mike, Michael is fine, but I usually go by Mike.
Okay, Mike. All right, so Michael or Mike asked to be part of the finance committee. So I'd like a motion to appoint him to the finance committee.
I'm moved.
All right.
Second.
Okay, that is Keenan Francois and Lisa Bloom with the second. Any discussion or anything? All right. I'll take a roll call vote. Keenan Francois.
Yes.
Kim Craven?
Yes.
Uh, Jackie White? Oh, did Jackie make it back in?
Oh, man.
I'm sorry.
Hold on, he's, he's coming.
All right. We'll come back to Jackie. Carla Lima?
Yes.
Alexander Bancooty? All right, thumbs up. Thumbs up. Alexander Bancooty is giving a thumbs up to Michael joining. Uh, Randy?
Yes.
Lisa, did I call you Lisa Bloom?
Yes, you did.
And Jackie White. We are appointing Michael or Mike to the finance committee.
Finance, yes.
All right. Mike, you are part of the finance committee.
Right.
All right, was there, did you want to be part of the policy committee as well?
Yes, I, I think so. I, I, and I, I attended the, the, the meeting this morning and, you know, kind of enjoyed it, actually. So, so, yeah, I would like to be on the policy committee as well.
Well, not, not many people say that about policy, thank you.
Uh, you know, I, I, I'm kind of a rules guy. I like to, I like to, to look at rules and, and, and understand them and, you know, parse through them. So, you know, it's something that kind of fits in.
Okay, then, that sounds great. We'll appoint you to the policy committee. Do I have a motion?
I will move to appoint Mike La Bossiere to the Policy South Committee.
I see.
Randy and Lisa Bloom? All right, roll call vote. Keenan. Francois.
Yes.
Kim Craven?
Yes.
Jackie White?
Yes.
Carla Lima?
Yes.
Alexander Bancooty?
The thumbs up?
Yes, there's a thumbs up. Um, Michael La Bossiere?
Yes.
Randy Rush?
Yes.
Lisa Bloom?
Yes.
And myself is yes. Are there any other committees, Mike, that you are interested in?
Uh, not at the moment. I think, I think starting out with just those two will be good.
Yes, those are two big committees.
Yeah, 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 there's a, there's a lot going on there, so I figure that'll, that'll be enough work for me.
All right. Was there anyone else that wanted to come forward to be appointed to a committee? Okay, I don't see anyone raising their hands. And so the next in the agenda is moving on to finance. Kim Craven, you can give your report.
So, there was a regional meeting this past week that included the town administrators, the, um, selectmen, finance committee members, um, members of the, um, executive team for, for finance from the school and, um, the superintendent, assistant superintendent to discuss where everybody is at with the budget. Um, sort of presentations included the information that we heard a little bit earlier about the, housing production that is happening in Pepperell and what that will mean, um, over the course of several years. There was discussion, um, Andrew McLean had prepared some budgetary information that I've asked him to forward for further discussion at the meeting on Friday that shows some of the projected revenue from the municipalities and where they'll be at. And looking at preliminary numbers from the school department itself. Um, additional information will be provided before Thanksgiving that then can be, um, used by Nancy and Kevin to provide the, um, finance committee some additional information. Um, you also, um, know that there's a letter from the three municipalities asking us to stay within a certain budget. And there was also at the prior regional meeting, a request from the town administrator from Ashby to evaluate other school closures. So there was preliminary numbers given at the meeting, um, the other day of looking at what sort of opening, closing, different scenarios, very high level, um, could, could be, um, you know, what it is to, to bring a school back online. But so we have, um, also been read the letter requesting, uh, the take a school off pause. All of those things, um, need to be considered from a financial perspective. Um, understanding that there's two very
Excuse me, Kim, I don't mean to interrupt, but it's really, really hard to hear.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
We're back on Zoom, let me turn the volume up. Is that better?
A little better.
Yeah.
Okay, a little better, I'm getting
Minimal.
Yes, okay, so sorry about that. Um, so what we're, we're all contemplating, right, is the district is part of the municipality, the municipality's budgets are challenged from the three communities. The, um, unknowns of what the municipalities will receive from the governor's budget and what the schools themselves will receive is something that we won't know until after the first of the year. So between now and then, you know, everyone doing their, their best efforts on both sides to come forward with the budget that um, can mean that the schools can operate. Um, I think that we heard some innovation tonight. Um, to, to bring both, um, educational opportunities and resources back to the district. So taking that all into consideration is what we'll be working on, um, for the next few months. And as I stated, we do have a meeting this Friday. Um, the, the one thing that is sort of, um, caught my eye that I'm sure we're going to discuss in a few moments, um, is policy. Um, I'd like to make sure that that policy does come to the finance committee with recommendations prior to, to coming back. Um, I'm going to try to stay on the law, the meeting as long as I can. But if for some reason I'm off by that time, um, I would like that, um, policy to come back to, to finance before it goes to the full school committee. Um, and that was something obviously new, hasn't happened, so I'm not reporting on it, um, as past, but something for the future. So that is, um, essentially what's happening in, in finance. We have some topics to discuss on Friday, looking at where we are with positions filled. Um, anything, um, new, challenging, unexpected will be on the agenda. Um, what was brought up, um, from the town administrator in Pepperell for review by the rest of the school committee meetings, um, uh, s- school committee members, um, will be on the agenda for, for Friday's meeting.
Right, thank you. All right, thank you for that report, Kim. And when is the finance meeting again?
About Friday morning, maybe nine o'clock.
Okay.
I was gonna ask you to confirm the time.
Is that the correct time, Keenan?
Um, I didn't think it was Friday morning. I thought it was like December first.
December first at eight thirty AM. I don't know if I missed something somehow, but
Well, I have one on the, I have one on my agenda for this Friday, so I guess I'm overly ambitious.
Yeah, it's
It is on my school committee calendar.
It's um
I think it's December first. I think that was what we had agreed upon in the last meeting. The finance meeting.
At eight thirty.
At eight thirty.
All right.
Okay.
So I'll be there by myself on Friday for the one
Yeah, I, well, I, I see what you're talking about now. I think that's just a random, like, recurring meeting that might be, like, old, so
There was a, was an issue with the recurring meeting, though I apologize for that. And, um, so you, you know, you can go ahead and delete any finance committee meetings off of your calendars. I'm going to be updating the link, so we're always using the same Zoom meeting for all committee m- meetings, so that there is no confusion. People can always go back to that same link, so.
Well, that's great. I'm, I'm prepared already, so
You are, so, and I appreciate that, thank you.
But so that's, so since I'm now on the finance committee, I guess I should add that to my calendar, so that's December first.
You'll get it, you'll get an invite from me, um, that way, um, and, and what we'd ask is that you accept or decline so that we know there'll be a quorum. You'll get every, from me. If you have any questions, just reach out to me, send me an email.
Just totally random question on that. Is a quorum for a four-member subcommittee two or three?
Three.
Three.
Three. It always goes above the tie, tiebreaker.
It, it's gotta be over fifty percent to It it's gotta be over fifty percent. It can't be exactly fifty percent. Okay, got it.
Correct, no. So that's why it's important when we have the small meetings that we know who is available.
Yeah, if if only two people show up, it doesn't count. Got it.
And it is, and especially like for our administrators, because they are taking a hu- a big chunk of their day too to meet with us. Um, but we always understand that family things and emergencies in life come up, and sometimes these meetings need to be moved.
Yep.
Alright, before we move on, I have Alexander waiting to be added. Robin?
Oh.
He dropped and came back on. Alright, then.
Coming in now.
Okay, now we're moving on to Policy. Randy?
Um, I can say for this, uh, just do I have the ability to actually share permission at Robin? I don't know. Okay, I haven't tried yet, so.
If if not, I'll, I'll try to do something in the thing, but you should be all set.
Yeah, no, I apologize. Um, so there are two policies that I have, Policy D I B, which is the first one that we're going to discuss. And then there's another one under the first reading F C B. Um, both of these policies we've been discussing in uh Policy Finance, uh, Policy Fund, Policy Subcommittee. Um, and we made some edits this morning. Um, so I'm going to share my screen so that everybody can see uh the differences of what got put into the packet um versus what we decided on this morning. Um, so Policy D I B is a fiscal reserve um policy. Um, I have been asked by uh Brad uh to take a look at um getting a policy together that uh would basically uh help us define our financial, uh our fiscal reserves and um to get out of the cycle of using E N D as revenue. Um, because as everybody who has paid attention to our budget, it's a very vicious cycle that we are in always using the um E N D for revenue. Trying to make sure we have that to come back because um at the end of the year, we would have nothing in our reserves to put it back into the budget because we don't want to um cause a um a a huge increase for the uh towns having to make up for one-time money, which is essentially what the issue is, is E N D is one-time money, and it really should not be um used as revenue on a regular basis. Um, so there were a bunch of changes that we made from what you have in the packet uh for this policy. Um let me just bring it up. Um, most of those changes that we made is we kind of pared it back. Originally, I think I had too much of a uh I I had too much I was trying to put into this as far as specifics. And so we kind of pared this back. There was a lot of concern about um unintended consequences of constraining um our abilities too much. Um, but I did look at other districts for this policy. Um, a lot of this policy came from Triton uh Regional Schools. Um, we also looked at Acton, Bucksboro has a uh E N D or a fiscal reserves. Um, Penn Tucket had one. Um, and I forget whether it was West Borough or another uh district that we were kind of modeling this off of. Um so there's four different areas uh of what the policy entails. There's the first part, which just goes over the philosophy of what, of why we have this policy and what we intend for it. And then there's three different areas uh that describe the different fiscal reserves that we have. We had a lot of discussions about this. Um, we'll take it section by section, I think is probably going to be the the easiest. So, but feel free to ask questions along. I will try and watch for hands going up. And uh Jackie and Lisa Bloom, please feel free to jump in if I'm missing something or uh not explaining it well. Um so let me share my screen.
Actually, Kim has her hand up.
Okay.
So that you see it. Just telling you.
Thank you. Okay, um, Kim?
Want a clarification on this one? Um so what's in our packet has been worked on and is now different?
Yes.
Okay, and this is the one that I'd I'd love to, before we discuss it at a full committee meeting, are you okay with it going to the Finance Subcommittee for review to then come back?
I'm not sure that's, you know, legal, uh only because um our communications and deliberation on things um is consecutive. And I have, uh, there's three of us on policy that are not on finance. And if finance discusses it, we discuss it on our own, and finance discusses this, and it comes before the committee for a vote. I'm not a hundred percent sure that that can fly. Um, so this really kind of needs to be in open session, and uh anybody on finance or anywhere, anyone on the committee should feel free to chime in. Um, but if I, if I'm incorrect about that, uh someone let me know. But as far as I know, that would be consecutive deliberation for to go to another uh subcommittee before voting. Um.
So my other question on that is, I don't know how extensive the the changes are. Um, so I read the other one in detail. And now this is different.
Right. Um, again, if the committee doesn't feel feel like um they are prepared to vote it in for a first reading, that's fine. We can put this off, but I want to make sure that we start discussing this because it can have um some very big effects on how the district starts to do their F Y twenty-seven budget. So I wanted to start having the conversations with the full committee. Is this something that we're looking to go towards? Um, if we can come to a consensus on what we have for a first reading, and then it goes out to the community, goes out to um everybody in the district, goes out to all of the school committee members, and you can bring back um comments, we can certainly do that. Um, and there's nothing that says that we have to adopt it at the next meeting. We can continue it, make more changes, or vote it down at any point after uh now or the first reading. Jackie?
So I think this is a timing issue. Like, we would have shown the mocked-up version in the packet, except we just met this morning. And so I think that's why I didn't get to you. But we wanted, it's more of an effort for us to be transparent, but also um, so you can see kind of how we discussed it and went about this, because you might have similar questions that those of us on the committee did as well. And so we thought seeing like the strike-throughs or different language that we tossed around, if you could see those edits in there, that might be helpful. That's why.
Yeah, and and I understand the timing of meetings don't always align. I'm not saying that you guys did anything, you know, it just happens when things come. But if if you're comfortable, Randy, delaying the first reading so that we can read through the most updated one, I I would appreciate that as as there was pretty big, you know.
Yep, well, let's get to the end and have a discussion, and then um we'll see how everybody feels if if uh uh, because it actually got a lot simpler. Um, but again, if uh the committee doesn't want to vote for a first reading, that's just fine. But I think we, it's really valuable to have this conversation tonight.
Can you make it a little, can you make your screen a little bigger?
Yes, hold on. I am looking.
Control plus.
Yeah, there it is. Okay.
That's, 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 that's the font size.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I'm looking for.
I thi- I think, I think control plus was the, was the right call there. I think that'll zoom it in.
Control plus. Okay, I think it's covered by the whole thing telling me that I'm sharing.
Oh. Oh, there, the, yeah, the hundred percent. There we go.
There you go.
Ah.
Okay. That, that look, everyone can see that now? Okay. Um, so again, a lot of this language did come from um uh Pen uh Triton's policy. Um, so there's a lot of uh language in here. Financial Reserve Policy is a means of ensuring the long-term this uh financial health and flexibility of the North Millsex Regional School District, as well as a tool to support the district's fiscal decision-making. Um in our version, we actually took out the rest of that sentence. And just stating the obvious, that the, what the fiscal reserve policy is meant to be. And it, and that's exactly what we want, is we want to try and make sure that the district has enough savings for if we need savings. Uh, those savings uh help us in a lot of different ways, including with getting good rates on loans. Um, and it's, uh, if you just look at any kind of fiscal policy, um, that's what we have. Uh, uh, you know, these are the types of things that you need to have. So um Financial Reserve Policy covers various classes of reserve funds intended to provide for unanticipated expenses, which are contingency funds, and to supplement the general fund operating budget. And then these are the three different types of reserves that we have. We have operating reserves um which provide resources for unanticipated expenditures or unexpected uh uh revenue loss during the year. We have capital reserves, which provide resources for the repair, replacement, or construction of capital infrastructure. And we have the O P E B reserves, which provide for the funding of the other post-employment benefit liability. Um, the district is committed to establishing and maintaining uh varied reserves that provide for stability and predictability in our financial planning. The district will maintain the following reserve funds and contribute to and maintain these funds as outlined below. Our new version, I'm just going to go down really fast to it. You can take a look uh down here. Um, that is all that this first section has in the pared-down version that we have. Um, some of those other uh paragraphs up there were trying to they were jumping too far ahead, like when we have extra, extra money, how are we going to spend it? Some ideas for a lot of different things. Um, and we were getting um caught up with what would be too constricting, what um belongs in a policy, what doesn't. So for the start of this and trying to do the transition to not using our E N D as um revenue and keeping it as a fiscal reserve, we paired back this first section to the very basics of what, what is this policy for? Um, the E N D section was uh largely where we made um the second most mi- um, second most amount of changes from the original version in your packet. Um so here we had a whole lot of different areas where we were putting down what extra money can be uh used for and a lot of different ideas. Um, Lisa, you have a hand up?
Yeah, Kim, so is the stuff in green, as it appears green on your screen, is that the stuff you've added in?
That, in this original one, yeah, some of that was added in. Um um, but I think that should be in the one in your packet. I forget whether, there may have been one or two other things. Um, some things got added in, and then we took a bunch out. All of this stuff right now on on the screen um as far as the bullet stuff, all but like, I think four of them were taken out. And I'll show you right now what it came down to. I just wanted to kind of see, explain the transition from what you were seeing versus where we got to. Um, so the E N D section again is much smaller. Um, only these four bullet points. Um, so where we got to with E N D is the available E N D balance is calculated and certified each year by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services, using data submitted by the district. Increases to the E N D balance on an annual basis consists of revenues exceeding budgeted amounts um as well as unspent appropriations. While the allowable use of E N D by statute is largely unrestricted, sound, a financial practice suggests that this reserve provides for the financing of unforeseen emergency needs such as unanticipated operating or capital costs or loss of revenue. Um, it is the expectation of the North Millsex Regional School Committee that E N D should not be used regularly as a revenue source in future operating budgets. And that, that's the crux of what we're trying to do is uh have enough uh flexibility if we need it in a particular year, but to set the expectation that we're not going to have this cycle where we're going to be using it year after year after year. Um, this next paragraph is a little bit more of the meat. Um, current legislation limits the district's E N D balance to a maximum five percent of the district's total general operating fu- uh budget. It is recommended that we maintain between three to four percent E N D balance to protect against unforeseen costs. The school committee may consider, upon recommendation of the superintendent, budgeting anything in excess of the three percent for. And again, we pared it down to additional investment in the stabilization of O P E B reserve accounts, one-time purchases, applied as funding source for the following year's budget, again, leaving that flexibility if we have to do that, and then other needed use. Um, and then there's a statement here that the North Millsex uh Regional District School Committee, on occasion, may approve by a two-thirds vote the use of existing E N D funds as additional revenue within a current fiscal year in order to cover unanticipated revenue shortfalls or to fund non-recurring or unforeseen expenditures that are deemed as either extraordinary or unavoidable by district administration and the school committee. Any vote to increase the current year budget through the use of E N D funds is considered an increase in the district budget and shall be submitted to all member towns for approval in accordance with D E S E regulations. And that is using it for this year's um reserves. So if we have something that goes above and beyond our our budget, and we really need to pay for it because it was completely unforeseen, we, something came in at twice the cost that it was supposed to be, we have the ability in this current year, by a two-thirds vote, to say that we're going to use some of these E N D funds to cover that budget. It would increase the budget, but not increase town assessments. And by statute of the uh regulations, that has to be approved by the towns. But generally, if the assessments are not going up, the town managers have um the ability to just approve it without a town meeting. Lisa?
Okay, so if this is saying that by two-thirds vote, we can use E N D funds without going back to the towns?
Yes, we are, yes, we can.
Because it's always been, yeah, because it's always been my understanding is we've, to use those E N D funds, we've always had to go back to the town to ask.
Wait, yeah, well, we send it to the town administrators. They have the ability to approve it. They can have the option to go to a town meeting to approve it. Um, or they can just approve it on their own if their assessments are not being changed.
Because sometimes this is going to require a town vote, depending on how the town sits on it. If they let it expire, right? Because they're, they have so many.
They let it expire, then it's approved. So they have, Nancy, help me out, forty-five days, I believe, or is it thirty days from when we?
I, I have to look it up, but forty-five sounds about right.
Yeah. Um, so it's a maximum of forty-five days. Um, and again, um, the idea of using this in any particular year is not to increase the town assessments, but to cover costs that came in over what we were expecting and budgeted. And, and that kind of like meets the whole idea of us having a fiscal reserve so that we can budget a little bit tighter um if we need to um and not worry about uh you know, how much we have to have at the end of the year uh to cover our revenue again. Because that's the cycle we're in right now, is we ideally will have the same amount of um unexpended expenses, you know, in the budget to cover how much E N D we put in so that we can do that cycle all over again. Kim? You're on mute.
Thank you. I was trying to follow along with what you had sent before and what you were talking. And it's just too hard. Um, I want to give this the due diligence and.
And, and that's fine. We can, we can talk more uh concepts about all of this too, and get that out and kind of get a feel for where the committee feels as far as moving towards this. Um so I will open it up for questions on the use of the E N D, on how people feel about moving towards not using it as revenue um and um for some of the uses we have here and for covering the current year overages. Lisa?
Okay, so my question is probably to Nancy and Kevin. my question is probably to Nancy and Kevin. What, like, is there somewhere that you see issues with this? Cuz in ways, I don't wanna handcuff ourselves or the committee to a policy if we're gonna, cuz we don't know the, we know the finances, but we don't know it as well as Nancy and Kevin. And so that's, and I'm just gonna be clear, that's my biggest worry, is that are we putting in rules that we think we understand, but that can't be followed by Nancy and Kevin?
Yeah, invite Nancy and Kevin, uh, to please speak up on this. Uh, they have been in on our policy subcommittees and giving their input as well along the way, but I certainly wanna hear from them.
Well, yeah, so, um, can you hear me okay? Uh, so, uh, reserve policy is a good, good thing to have in place, I would say. Um, I think where, uh, um, we just wanna make sure we don't put this, the committee in the situation where they have to feel like they're not following the policy by doing something. So I guess, um, as long as there's flexibility within the wording on the policy to allow the school committee if they need to use it, um, to have it available. And, um, and I think ultimately, should we try and go down a path where we're weaning ourselves off of E and D, it's going to take some years to do that, is my guess. Um, I don't think, um, I don't know how people feel about having the language of should not be used for as a revenue source or should be used, maybe, um, maybe that's something to consider as far as, um, how we wanna word it. But other than that, I think the, the excess, um, you know, leaving anything in excess of 3% is available for appropriation is fine, but I'm, there might be years where you need to use more than that. So I think as long as there's flexibility, that's, I, I think the best way to have it, at least certainly initially in starting out, you know, especially knowing, knowing how tight things have been, um, in the past with trying to get a budget that towns can't afford. So I think, um, that's a kind of where I'm at with it. Um, overall, I think having a reserve policy is a good thing if we can get language that everybody's content with and, um, a plan going forward for how, how would we, how would we fund our budget should we not use E and D for it?
Lisa, did you have something more?
Yes, um, cuz I just wanna clarify with the committee that a few years ago, we did use all of E and D to supplement the budget. So it did happen and it was, and I, I know that Brad and Nancy spoke out and said on record that we should not be using as much E and D as we did. And as a committee, we voted to use it all. So I just want people to understand that the committee did that.
Yep, yep, we absolutely did. Um, and, uh, again, that's part of the reason why I'd like to have something in writing, um, that kind of gives the expectations, uh, for the school committee, for the district and for the community about how we're going to use this money and why we wanna keep it, um, as a reserve, um, and how it's going to help the district, um, be in a better, uh, fiscal, uh, place. Lisa, blue?
Um, yeah, I just wanna say that Brad has been in our conversations and, um, maybe Brad, you can just tell the committee as well what you think about this policy.
Sure, so, um, I think I've been pretty vocal a- about, um, using E and D on an annual basis to, to fund our budget. I, I do think it's a practice that we need to move away from. Um, the concern I have is that we, where we have been dependent on it, and I, I know this year we, um, we, we essentially froze our budget and were able to, um, fund E and D from that freeze. Um, but that was, again, the district going without, um, with things that the district, you could easily argue, needed. Um, whether it be not filling positions, not having, um, some technology things done, some curriculum things done. Um, I, I, again, I think moving away from it is a good idea. I'm just concerned, um, that i- at this point, do we want to put something in place where we are weaning ourselves off of it with the goal of, um, not using E and D because we have been dependent on it? And I do think our, our towns have an expectation that we are going to use E and D, um, because we have been using it previously. Um, so again, those, those are my thoughts. I, I think, uh, in concept, I think it's a good idea to move in this direction. Um, but, but I do agree with, with Nancy that, um, I do have concerns around the fact that if we do it all at once or, or do too much in one year, it could put us in a really difficult spot, um, especially with some significant changes that are gonna, that will be happening, um, w- with leadership in the business office, um, you know, with next year. So I, I think that's going to be a challenge in its own right.
Um, Carla, one moment, um, I just wanna speak to that. So we can certainly put in some other language in here to talk about a transition period going to, um, meeting this in its entirety. Or we can, you know, that, that is part of the reason why, um, I put in here this expectation. Um, and then also had that we can use, um, that's just not a regular basis. Um, if everyone feels better and thinks that our intentions are best, if we put something in here during the transition years, um, we know we're not gonna meet this and, or that there will be a transition period where this won't be fully met. We can certainly put language like that into the policy. Cuz I do understand that a transition period and once we are at the place where we aren't using it on a regular basis are two different things. Um, but it would, but I would be certainly looking to the administration, um, obviously mainly, uh, Nancy and Kevin to be coming up with a transition plan, uh, that makes sense and, um, and gets us to where we want to go. Carla?
Yeah, so just, you know, for, for a lack of, you know, um, everyone's understanding and layman's term, basically, this is a contingency plan, basically. Um, and I'm just trying to bring, bring it back to my world of construction, you know? There should always be a contingency plan for the things that are unforeseen that happens. Oh, I have my emergency money for that. Is that what you're, you know, this whole?
That is what this is, yes.
Okay.
Um, Lisa?
Sorry.
That's okay.
So my question before I forget, has this gone through legal yet? Has legal looked at any of this? Cuz is it, can we legally do these things?
Yes, yeah, we can. It, one, one, I took this from other, um, districts, so other districts are doing this. Um.
I mean, I'd, I'd like it to go through legal to just verify that we're not doing any, I mean, just, just to feel for it, I mean.
Yeah, I know, uh, once we have a, um, finalized draft, we can, uh, certainly look at doing that. Um, I'm, uh, Nancy, do you think there's anything in here that needs to go to legal?
I mean, nothing's coming out, but I, I don't have a problem with it. I don't think it would be a big deal to have them re- read through it. Just as a confirm.
Okay, then we can certainly do that.
And I'm not saying send them this version. I'm saying, like, the next reiterations when we have finalized.
That, that, that is fine. Um, are there any other comments or questions on the E and D section? The other two sections should be very quick conversations cuz they're fairly straightforward on what they are. Okay, and we'll move on to the capital stabilization fund. And this, uh, capital stabilization fund and the OPEB, I don't think changed from what was in your packet. Um, and basically, this is just saying we do have a cap- capital stabilization fund. It was created under chapter seventy-one, section sixteen G and a half. Um, and that this is to, you know, it goes through, um, that we want to try and keep, um, ten percent. We wanna build that up to ten percent of our operating budget, uh, for any kind of, uh, capital expenses. Um, at that point, at ten percent, it hopefully would be able to fund our, uh, annual capital improvements of two hundred fifty thousand dollars through interest. Um, and it's there for, um, working, you know, uh, slightly larger, um, projects that we might wanna do in the district to be able to use. It's going to be funded, um, by, uh, certified available excess E and D above the three percent is one way we can fund it, um, having, um, one-time revenues can we can put in there? And then having the line in our, uh, operating budget as we do right now to fund this until we get up to the ten percent. And it says the fund that's could be considered in addition to funding special capital projects, uh, the Reserve Contingency Fund for all unanticipated capital expenses. And it shall not be commonplace to include contingency capital expenses, uh, within the general operating budget lines except for planned capital projects. So again, trying not to use this to supplement the budget like we, you know, do with the E and D, um, but just use it for capital reasons and it, and, um, and emergencies. Lisa?
Sorry, sorry for so many questions, but. Okay, so the Capital Stabilization Fund was created a few years ago.
Yep.
But there has been years where we have not funded this, correct, Nancy? Like, some of these years where we have not had the money, we've just said zero to capitalization.
Correct.
Okay.
And there's nothing that says that it has to be. This is just, our goal would be ten percent and it can be. Um, I'm gonna say, so, right in the middle of here, in an effort to accumulate resources within the fund, the district may include a line. Um, so there's nothing that says that we have to. It would be good practice to do that, to get it up to where we want. Um, but again, trying not to tie our hands when, um, we, we have that, it's a may, not a shall. Okay, and then the OPEB section, again, the OPEB is for other post-employment benefits. Um, it's by per MGL thirty-two B, section twenty, for the purpose of accumulating resources to provide legally required retiree health insurance benefits. Um, and this pretty much says that we shouldn't be pulling money out of that until it is fully funded. And then I believe Nancy had said today that once it is fully funded, there'll be other options that we have that we can actually pay some of our, um, annual costs out of, for retirees out of this fund, once it is, um, fully funded. But I don't think it's, at the, the rate we're funding it, it's like twenty thirty-one or thirty-four when it will be fully funded.
So, yeah, well, um, to clarify, the, the fully funded piece that I was speaking about this morning is the Middlesex Retirement, um, Retirement Assessment. Uh, the other post-employment benefits numbers are just incredibly high.
Um, no, I apologize, I misunderstood.
No worries, no worries. I, I can see why that would be mixed up, but in any case, um, the idea, uh, that we, we haven't actually put that in the policy yet, but one of the ideas for, um, trying to fund this other post-employment benefits is to use the appropriation that's in the Middlesex Retirement, once the Middlesex Retirement is fully funded, um, to, to try to allocate some of that funding or all of that funding to the OPEB so that we can, you know, in- increase it, um, and keep reducing the, the ongoing, um, liability that's on the balance sheet.
Okay. But again, um, it's fairly, um, flexible and, uh, wide open at this place, uh, so that we can do what we need to, um, in the moment.
And we've been consistently funding the OPEB account in the budget, um, with a hundred, roughly around a hundred and fifty thousand for the past, um, I wanna say, four or five years.
Okay. Um, so, I'm gonna say, I'm trying to think, if we don't pass this as a first reading, how legally to distribute this to everybody, um, when we do have a final version, uh, if not this one from the subcommittee. Lisa?
So, I think it does have to go back to the Policy Committee to reiterate it. Just because there, there needs to, some of the wording may need some clearing up, um.
Okay, there are changes allowed between a first reading and a second reading or an adoption. Um, and that's the only reason why I was thinking about putting it out there for a first reading. This way we can get feedback from the communities. Uh, it pushes this along that if we do actually, um, uh, finalize this, um, then we're all set to adopt it. And again, in a timely manner for the development of the FY twenty-five budget. That's my biggest concern. I don't wanna pass this in, um, February or March and then take a look at our budget and say, we're already not, didn't plan on this. Um, so I'm just trying to get this kind of pushed along.
Have the town administrators seen this, Randy?
Not the policy in particular, no. Uh, and again, uh, first reading only puts it out for comment. There's nothing that says that we have to adopt it in any particular time other than, uh, a minimum. Um, we can keep it out there for three months. We can have it go back to the, uh, policy, uh, subcommittee and then come back, you know, multiple times and not adopt it yet.
So if we put it out for first reading, question, if we put it out for first reading, can it be sent to the Finance Committee to look at? And then bring back?
So, so Randy's saying that we can't do that, um, because.
I'd be happy to get some, um, clarification on that from either MASC or from legal. Um, I just don't wanna make sure that we're not, uh, breaking the OML with consecutive deliberation. That's all.
I, I, I agree with that. So could you find out if we can have a joint meeting, um, between the two committees? That would essentially be, uh, you know, open to everybody, but so that our committees are meeting, cuz it would then constitute a, a quorum. Um, because this is just so important and like I said, I was trying to follow along with what you were showing on your screen and what I was doing and I just can't. And as you know, these types of policies, you know, shall, shoulds, may really make a difference.
Yep, absolutely.
Are. So that's why I, I just don't want to get into a position where,
Okay.
we don't have the time. So if this is first reading and you're not coming back for a second reading, you know, cuz you, we would normally go to first reading and then adopt it in the second reading. But we don't.
But there's nothing that says that we have to.
Right, so that's, that's my only concern here, is that I have not had time to absorb. And again, not, not kicking rocks at you. Things happen the way the meetings go. I just wanna make sure that I have a, a time to really read and absorb the changes from one iteration to another.
That is fine. Um, and as far as having a joint meeting, um, it's kind of semantics. If we're gonna have a quorum of the school committee, you know, being that our subcommittees are made up of only us, then it's a meeting.
Right, I was just thinking that it, it moves it along on the schedule is all.
Yeah, no, I guess that we can certainly have another, call another school committee meetings just specifically for this. Doesn't have to be the evenings. Um, but I, you know, a joint meeting, it doesn't seem to make sense when we're gonna have a quorum there. It's a meeting of the school committee.
Except we have a finance committee meeting coming up in between now and the next one is all, um.
You can always just list it as a school committee meeting.
Right.
Right.
It's whatever you all wanna do.
But then, once they leave, we lose our quorum.
If you do a joint, yep. If you list it as a joint, otherwise you'd probably have to establish two meetings, a finance meeting and then a joint meeting. Two types of different meetings. Cuz where you could have two different agendas, you could have the joint meeting where you're discussing this, then reset or exit out and then go another meeting.
Right, in the joint meeting, we would both host, we would bring this up first. We would open each our individual meetings. Then we would open the joint meeting, then the Policy Committee would retire, and then we would continue with the Finance Committee. Then we would open the joint meeting, then the policy committee would retire, and then we would continue with the finance committee meeting.
And I think if you're going to discuss the policy after we leave, it's going to be the same.
We would discuss the policy after you leave. We would discuss it with you. But if there's concern, then we just wait. I'm just. I'm just not comfortable not having read such an important policy to just see it all in one place.
Can I get, I mean, Kim and Lisa have been kind of verbal on this and I'm assuming that. And I, I guess I shouldn't assume anything. Can I find out from the committee, is the concept of moving towards this? Working on the language and doing that, something that the committee is open to? And thinking about so that we can, the administration at least can keep it in the back of their heads on whether this is something that they need to start working on and seeing if there's a transition. Keenan?
Yeah, so I foundationally, I agree with the concept. I like, I like what we're doing here. I'm kind of in Kim's boat right now. I've led the old one. I'm trying to keep up with this one, you know, it's just a little bit difficult for me. I don't know if you can tell, I'm quite sick right now. And it's kind of painful and we're going on an hour over at this point. So I think like kind of what we were talking about, what was being discussed is kind of doing a joint meeting. Just to discuss this issue separately, it might be prudent before going to a first reading. If that's what process is like, yeah, I kind of got lost.
Okay. All right, let's take, take the type of meeting offline. I can talk with, certainly talk with Kim and Lisa. As far as what is appropriate on whether we have a joint meeting, whether we have a workshop, whether we have a full meeting, whatever it ends up being, and then we can see when people are available.
Also Randy, we can check with MASC and see what they would recommend for something like this since it is a huge policy and it's impacting several things. So, so we'll take a pause on this one. And come back. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yep. Again, I just wanted to make sure that the direction that we're gonna, you know, if we're putting more energy into this, that everyone kind of at least is behind the concept to start.
And to be clear, I, I am Randy. That's so much so that I want to make sure we're really exploring and doing the, the due diligence. So yeah, I agree with the philosophy and, and the trajectory.
All right, then we can certainly clean that up and, and look at the, the next steps. Thank you for indulging that conversation. It, it is kind of tough to, on, on this big concept sometimes to have these conversations, but they have to be had. Moving on for policy, we have a number of policies out for adoption. I have not had any feedback from anybody in the district or in the communities on these policies. So I'm going to take them as a full group if everyone's okay with that. So I will move that we adopt, adopt the following policies. Policy JG, NM RSD, middle school pathways. Policy IJ NDB, use of technology. Instruction. Policy IJ NDD, social media policy for school districts. Policy JIB, student involvement in decision-making. Policy IMG, animals in schools. Policy enrollment rights. And services. Policy JAFAB children. Policy children in foster care. Policy JIC. I'm sorry. Let me, I'll read these three and then I'll take IC hands. Policy JIC student dis- discipline. Policy JICC, also EE AEC. Student conduct on, on school buses, student conduct on school buses. I don't know who put their hands up first. There's Lisa and there's Kim.
Was Randy breaking up during all of that? Yes, okay.
I'm so sorry. That's okay. I tried to tell you, the only thing that I, I didn't hear was policy EFC, free and reduced food services. Say that one.
Can you see me, Robin? I can't see anyone else.
I can see every, everybody. Frozen.
Oh, you can. Yeah.
Maybe if they come in and come back out. There we go.
I, I apologize. Did I enter for everybody by leaving?